Good evening, everyone. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor Administrative Offices and each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Roll.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Here.
Mr. Donlin? Mrs. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Heffernan?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Mrs. Minnweeze?
Here.
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Here.
Mr. Capone?
Here.
We're going to start off now with Ms. Sophia Heber-Brock from High School North. How are you, Sophia?
Good, how are you? Hi, everyone. Three of our High School North seniors, Leva Burke, Lauren Stone, and Maya Yacalonas, received their Associate of Arts degree from Brockdale Community College on May 12th. The Class of 2022 Senior Breakfast was held at the football stadium on May 17th, compliments of the High School North PFA and senior parents. The poetry slam was held on May 18th during Block 3. Carmen Sabris was the first-place winner, followed by second-place winner Caitlin Nickerson, and third-place Nicole Piesienta. Fifty-five seniors and juniors were inducted into the Rocheappa National Social Studies Honor Society on May 18th. Junior Prom was held on May 19th at the Gramercy at Lakeside Manor. May 25th was a busy day here at North. Athletic Signing Day was held to congratulate and celebrate the 23 student athletes who will be continuing their athletic career on a collegiate level. A spring band concert was held, and also on the 25th, the cast of the North Drama Club Spring Musical, "A Chorus Line", were invited to perform at the Count BC Theater BC Awards. Numerous individual students were also nominated and were recipients of BC Awards. Winners include Best Supporting Actor, Daniel Sabanski; Best Lead Actor, Sam Kuson; Best Choreography, Miss Tara Mahoney; Miss Best Vocal Direction, Mr. Peter Isherwood; Best Direction, Miss Amanda Barea. Two North students were also recipients of the Count BC Arts Impact Scholarship Award, Sophia Heber-Brock and Kirsten Duck. Beth Lyon hosted James Swerigen, a world-famous composer, to work with our band Students and Guests from Raridan High School on May 24th and May 25th. Mr. Swerigen composed a special piece of music for North Band students, which he conducted at the spring concert. The students will be performing this piece of music at the graduation ceremony. The English Honor Society induction was held on May 26th. The marching band participated in the Memorial Day Parade on May 30th. Jessica Ardelina, Grade 11, was accepted into the New Jersey All-State Treble Honors Choir. Sarah Buckman, Grade 11, and Sal Rossiopi, Grade 11, were accepted into the New Jersey All-State Mix Honors Choir. Their advisor is Mr. Peter Isherwood. For TV film, congratulations to Sophia Heber-Brock as her short documentary, "The Best of Times or Worse of Times", was a semifinalist at the Student Los Angeles Film Festival. Eight of Middletown North films were nominated and played at the Big Screens and Silver Screens Film Festival. For the first time ever, the students have screened films in 25 different film festivals this year so far. Rich Carroll, Kathy Clapp, Ray Conde, and Bronce Sebestré facilitated two highly-successful and well-attended spring track and field events at our campus. Many athletes performed their personal bests. We have a lot of events coming up as the year comes to a close. Tomorrow, we have the Disney Honor Society induction. June 2nd will be the spring concert, spring choir concert. June 3rd will be the senior prom, the Arts Academy's showcase, National Honor Society induction. That's all for this one.
Thank you, Sophia. Congratulations many times. Is Ryan here tonight? I need a motion to go to executive session?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? See you in a little while. Good evening, everyone. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public School District website, and posting of such notice at August T Minor Administrative Offices and each middle and secondary school in the district. Roll.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Here.
Mr. Donlin?
Here.
Mrs. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Heffernan?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Mrs. Minnweeze?
Here.
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Here.
Mr. Capone?
Here.
Please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of America.
Good evening, everyone. This is Cartier to speak about the Greenhouse Journey.
Are you going to use the porch behind us, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My pleasure to give you the two of my project managers. I have Christian Timothy Hooni and Mr. Randy Powlen, and they're going to help me with this presentation this evening. Now, the greenhouse journey began with the original funding for sustainable journey for schools and NSHA DA, enabling High School North to build an indoor greenhouse now for a learning lab. It successfully opened in the spring of 2018. Since then, we have added a chicken coop, and with the second grant, will soon have a heat sink and koi pond to warm and irrigate the plants in our greenhouse. The staff and students from our special class programs, the Science National Honor Society members, and the AP Environmental Science classes have been actively involved and invested in implementing and maintaining the greenhouse and the outdoor learning lab. These students have been learning in-depth lessons and life skills, and it's very rewarding to see them exhibit a sense of pride and accomplishment through their efforts in improving our school environment through their active participation in our sustainability initiatives.
And we started in the greenhouse building sub-irrigated garden boxes, so all those garden boxes you water from the top, and we have four-inch perforated corrugated pipe in the bottom to hold water, so that they don't have to be watered except for maybe every few weeks or so. So that was convenient for when we were out of town or, you know, off for vacation. And then that was some of the crops that we got first year in those sub-irrigated garden boxes. It started before that. Mr. Hiblitzel had his AP students solve the timer and were able to irrigate the outdoor garden boxes a little bit better now, and we refurbished a lot of those. We use companion planting to deter pests and have plants that work well together, which kind of summarizes what we're trying to do out there. We also did the Three Sisters Garden, which is cucumbers, beans, and corn. The beans will grow out the corn stalks. The cucumbers, the big leaves, keep the ground moist so that they all work together, so we tried to teach some of that. And then that went on to the chicken coop.
We had a lot of success with the greenhouse, so we wanted to take a step further. We used the money for the grant to find some plans for a chicken coop. We had great support with our administration. The kids were really excited about it. They developed the plans. We came outside. We were set back a while because of COVID and weather. This was the very beginning of the project. We're creating the foundation. It was a school-wide thing. It first started with our programs, and then we started asking different parts of the school to come out and help us, so we had a lot of the environmental kids come out, which Dr. Cartier is telling us to go move faster. This right here, we asked the art class to come out and help us paint. Kids all did a great job. This was about a year and a half in the making. I had chickens at my house, so we were real excited to bring this project to school. Here are our power professionals, which are, we have the best power professional in the square in the state. They're unbelievable. They're out here every single day. They come on the weekends to care for the chickens. They're fantastic. This is the final project, a product of the chicken coop. We gave the students the idea to choose what type of chickens they wanted to have, so they did the research on which type, different types of breeds of chickens. So we did the best we could to get all types of chickens. So I believe we had seven different breeds of chickens right there. Now, the new project this year going forward is-
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You guys hold on a second. What's the different types of chickens you have?
So I mean, you can really see the black chicken right here at the bottom.
I see.
That's a Polish hen. They have a big top. They're not great egg producers, but they produce really tiny eggs, but they're, the kids want them, so we did the best we could to go out and get them. Actually, they were donated by Jersey Silky, which was a wonderful woman at Freehold. She gave us two silky chickens and two Polish hens. We have some Rhode Island Reds, which were donated from a farm in Culsonak. We are now trying to just go to the next aisle real quick. We're working on a sorting hen, so we have a rooster, which we originally-
He's having fun.
We thought that, we originally thought that that was a girl, but once it kept out to be a boy, we decided to keep it, and now we're building a sorting box. So now we can, going forward for next year, we can now breed the chicks, and we can sort which hens we want them to breed with, so we can start doing this all ourselves.
Where do we get our eggs? What do you want a chicken to give us our eggs?
Well, white chickens, white eggs, brown chickens, white eggs. So we get, are you taking eggs from the, up on Middletown North? Have you had any of ours?
I haven't yet.
So yeah, absolutely. We can get some eggs.
I'll come and see this.
Yes.
This is very interesting.
Twenty-two oh nine, you can come in. There's always eggs on the desk. Teachers come in and grab them as they go. So help yourself. So we are now going to breed our own chicks. We have an incubator in the school, and we did only two of our chicks that we actually hatched in the classroom. So we're using the compost and the waste of the chickens now, and we're adding this to our compost bin. We have a three-bin section, starting from the left all the way to the right. We're, actually, this is the first year we'd be able to use that for our garden boxes. So we are sustainable.
So you gotta tell her, Tim, how long the eggs last that are armor-free, right?
About three weeks. As long as you're on the fridge.
Really?
On the count. And it tastes good.
I want you to know something. Before, my father had a chicken muck. And I never knew there was different chickens. I can't believe this. Wait till I call my sister and tell her. You know there was different chickens. Very interesting.
So back in the greenhouse, we were having trouble because it's over 120 degrees in there in the summer. It gets really, really hot. Some of the crops were burning. We wanted to extend our growing season. That's the ultimate goal of having a greenhouse. So we couldn't have electricity. We couldn't have gas out there. Well, we have electricity, but we can't just buy electric heaters, so there was no natural gas. So we decided to go in a sustainable fashion and build this heat sink. We made a hole about eight by 10 by six feet deep. We concreted it in. The kids helped pour concrete for us and passed it down to me in the hole, so we could pour the footer, build the walls. And then we're going to fill it now with any heat-re retaining materials, so construction debris, dark glass-water-type materials to hold heat during the day, and that'll radiate out at night. So it should regulate the temperature in the greenhouse a little bit. That's the goal of it, and hopefully get us a little bit more time in the fall, you know, because we still get some pretty good sunlight in that area of the greenhouse. So that's the main goal of building the heat sink. So all this was accomplished through the grants, and it's been just instrumental for our kids to be able to get out there and do some of this stuff and work like this. So those are the pipes that will pump the heat down into the bottom of the heat sink. We'll cover it with stone, so you won't even know it's there except for those two pipes sticking out of the ground. So we're almost there on that. We have it all framed out. We just got to fill it and then cover it. And then with the last grant.
The last part here. So what are our future plans? All right, the next thing is a koi pond, and it will serve two purposes. The water supply will be used to irrigate the plants, and also there would be water available for the chickens and perhaps a duck.
So we did have a small, we started with a small koi pond in the other courtyard, but this will help us tremendously to be able to do this. We have lots of ideas, but the students really have a say in all of it, so it's been really helpful. So we appreciate all the support and the time that we've had tonight.
Okay, so the High School North RE team. We are several people that are involved in this project. All righty, so their names are there. They have been integral to the success of our sustainability programs at North and the completion for us to earn Sustainability Jersey for Schools Broad Certification in two different cycles, 2017 to 2020, and then 2020 to 2023. And we, Randy and Tim join me with another member of the green team on May 9th to go down to College of New Jersey to receive the $10,000 grant.
Everybody works in, just let me know, okay? Thanks, have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cartier. Thank you all.
I know, I want to see, I'm coming to see this. This is so cool.
Okay, so committee reports. We have Co-Curricular Technology. Mrs. Caminiti?
We did meet.
I'm happy.
We did meet.
Very happy.
But he's going to tell you all about it. I haven't.
Nice to see you. Here we go.
I'm glad you took notes.
Good evening. We did have our Co-Curricular Technology meeting last week on the 23rd, and we went over a number of items. One of the items we spoke about was some technology projects. One of the larger projects we're taking this summer is we're upgrading all of our virtual servers. Server farms being upgraded across the district. We're installing 176 new interactive flat panels across all 15 schools. We're rolling out Chromebook cart storage and charging stations in our K-2 classrooms, and we're refreshing those Chromebooks in Grades 5, 9, and some elementary classes. We spoke about the Summer 2022 Technology Internship. This summer is going to be our sixth-year hosting internship. Eight students were chosen out of a group of over 40 summer students, extraordinary students. We spoke about how fit for it is, and narrowed that group down to just a handful of students, because they are amazing in their areas. Interns are going to work on the various projects, some of the ones I just mentioned here, across all 15 schools. And one of the things we want to try to focus on this year even more so, because we couldn't really do it during COVID, was we're going to have interns almost like work with every single person or develop technology departments, so kind of get an idea of all the aspects of technology, whether it's networking, or wireless, or hardware, or things like that. So we're going to try to make a conscious effort to get every student involved in every project. The internship start date is June 27th. I informed the committee that we just recently upgraded or migrated our transportation databases to the cloud, which will allow the Transportation Department, as well as the Student Information Department, easier access, remote access to the transportation databases in the future. I also informed the committee that we've recently completed our Excel migration. Excel is one of our internet providers. They actually provide data and voice to the district. We finally converted that over, finished that migration. The new contract is a larger throughput for the district at a reduced cost, and its service is procured through E-Rate and through ESC and J. I informed the committee that one of our Chromebook Accidental Damage Protection Companies went out of business, and they just shut, shuttered the shop. They locked the doors and let everybody go on Friday. So we have our vendor working with us, trying to obtain our devices that are in possession right now. The good, a positive note on that is the many likely terms of those contracts are now to be covered by the vendor and manufacturer, so we're slowly covered moving forward. And finally, we discussed about more steps we're taking on securing our network. I have 2020 that we implemented secure sign-on approach most all our district applications. Staff are now currently enrolling in the Passover Self-Management, so they can utilize Passover Self-Management and not have to rely on the department for that. Once that's completed, we're going to move on to putting multi-factor application across all our applications. And we're starting with our most critical accounts and users first, and then moving on to all staff. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Caminiti. Duty and Services. Ms. Little?
Ms. Tina is going to go through our discussion. I'll throw out a couple of points I took away from it. Thanks, Michelle.
So we went over a couple of initiatives when we met on May 19th. We talked about our inclusion initiative. So we have a number of things going on with our inclusion initiatives. The middle school, we're focusing on being able to provide some kind of support for the world language teachers as far as their ability to modify and accommodate. And we've met with the world language teachers to talk to them about that. We are also looking at having more of our students with disabilities in our general education social studies classes, so moving more towards gen ed away from resource, depending on the determination of the IEP team, but we want to be able to have more inclusion facilitation for our middle school social studies. And we're working with NJCIE on helping us with that. INRS is also being supported. Our work with Dr. Fergus from Temple University is currently focusing on INRS meetings. Dr. Fergus is visiting the meetings in all 16 buildings, so he can provide us with some assistance on general education interventions. That will help us avoid unnecessary referral classifications and thus expand our general education ability to assist the students. We talked about our behavioral. We have a number of behavioral initiatives going on. We have behavioral disability programs at each level. That's always determined by a student's IEP, whether they are placed in those programs. We have posted already for RITs, RBTs, so registered, my son wants RIT, so I automatically say RIT. So registered behavior technicians are RBTs. Currently, we have some contracted, but we're looking to have them be district employees. That position has posted a new position with the district. They will be overseen by BCBA's. We have a job description on for approval tonight for BCBA, because the RBTs must by virtue of their certification be overseen by our BCBA's. We have some initiatives going on with transition. There is a transition specialist who has been posted and will be interviewed to help our secondary students prepare for post-secondary life. Those students who have a more considerable disability will really benefit from that. And then ESY, we're well underway with staffing. It will be here before we know it. We have New Momma for our preschool and elementary, and Bay Shore for our middle high school students.
Yeah, I think I said the BCBA's. The Behavioral Supports is really interesting in terms of also the RBTs. I think that's a big change, a big improvement for the district. And then we talked about the Transition Specialist, I believe, during the budget, which I think is also going to be a very big thing. One of the other things we spoke about a little bit is trying to look at it, special education and the inclusion initiatives, and sort of have more of a overall plan. You know, we can, there's different initiatives and things going on, and we've also changed the, you know, special education is now with curriculum under Cell Phone, so to figure out, okay, from a board perspective, what kind of milestones should we have? So there was a start, looking at different focus areas. Four focus areas that the team started with, and this is from Michelle and from Cell Phone. The area, the first area is expansion of Tier 1 intervention capacity. Another area was tiered system of support, focus on process and consistency. There was also the third area, common understandings, consistency in the INS program, as we, you just mentioned. And then basically, specific special education areas. So, you know, as we talked about special education, we have all these things going on. It's sort of like, what's the picture supposed to look like at the end game? Right? How are we, how is INS support? How is that going to fit into the special education program? So as we go through this, hopefully, our committee can sort of like flesh that a little bit, see what those milestones are, where we are, where we want to be, you know, with, how that impacts our budget. So I thought it was a really good conversation. You know, it took a little while to get it on the calendar, because everyone's really busy, but it was great. And thank you, Michelle, for putting that together.
Thank you both. Moving on to Facility and Finance. Ms. Dari?
So our committee, our combined committee met on May 19th. We had in attendance, in addition to our committee members and our administrative liaisons, our incoming director of facilities, so he's been able to start catching up on a few things going on in the district. We did talk about some of the agenda items. We have on the agenda tonight a contract for bleacher replacement in the High School North and South Bubbles. And we talked about the cost of removing the old bleachers and reinstalling them, and the fact that the bleachers are old versus the cost of replacing and getting newer bleachers that were telescoping, they're automatic, and safer for operation, and newer, it didn't make sense to do the reinstallation of the old bleachers. So that contract's on the agenda for this evening. Fun fact, they're going to throw in logos on the bleachers with no cost, and they'll look really nice when they're closed up. They'll have the logos for High School North and High School South, so that will, that will look nice. We also have our renewal of our exterior interior door bid. Not a new bid. We have to go out to bid every couple of years to get a new bid, so that's on the agenda. We also reported to the committee, we've been working at looking at opportunities under the Direct Install Program through the VPU. We've been working with a representative there. We've provided them with utility bill information, and we're looking to identify some potential eligible projects through that program. We also are working to do the High School North field repairs. We are currently waiting on a wetlands permit, and we're working different channels to expedite that process and hopefully get that project underway during the summer. We also talked about some additional monthly procedures and servicing that we are doing on the Airdale units in the elementary schools. We had the manufacturer of the units come out and do an assessment, and we have implemented some new monthly cleaning procedures for these units, and we've also engaged the manufacturer, Modine, to address some of the insulation issues with the units that we have. So that's, that's a positive. As far as capital projects go, we are looking to start moving on projects that were included in the budget for next year, the main one being the High School North field and track. So we are awaiting a scope of proposal from our architect, and we will be looking at that and hopefully have something for the June meeting to approve, for them to start the design work and get that project underway. That's something that we are anticipating. The installation will be done, not this summer, but next summer. We also talked about some of the other agenda items under Finance. We have, as you can see on the agenda, our reappointment of professionals. We did share a chart with the committee. That's all on the agenda for tonight. We had a few competitive contract form requests for proposals for OTPT speech services, substitute services, staffing, onsite coaching, and mental health services. Those contracts are also on the agenda this evening. In addition, we also have renewals of the YMCA and Whitsons contracts based on the proposals that we've received from them previously. The Whitsons renewal will be the last renewal that we can do under this five-year renewable contract. We will have to go out for a proposal next year on the food service contract, where required by law to do that. The YMCA, this will be their second year of their new contract that we had established with them. And both of those are in compliance with the proposals that we have received from, at the time we've gone out for the proposals. We also talked about the 2223 medical prescription. We call them pseudo-rates. As you know, we're self-insured now, so we don't get billed premiums by an insurance company. We have to develop rates internally to use for the staff to pay their contributions on. And as a result of the activity and the trends that we've had over the past year, the actuary looked at that and determined that we could actually decrease the pseudo-rates by about 6.6% for next year. Now, this will impact employees who are not in the New Jersey EHP plan that still pay their contribution based on the premium. So that was also a positive for the employees. We also talked about looking at our 2122 budget status, and we are anticipating that there will be some available surplus over the 2% fund balance limit, And we will be talking about whether we will be depositing that into a reserve account or, uh, retaining it in fund balance for flexibility. So we will be looking at that as the year round gets closer. Uh, we will discuss that further at the June meeting. Uh, and we also, uh, briefly discussed the, with the committee, an update from the Port Momma feasibility study and just relaying to the committee of what had been discussed in shared services. Uh, the, the company who's doing the feasibility study, Pinnacle, they're currently working on the fi, financial projections for the type of facility that we're looking at. So we are waiting those. We don't have anything for it on that. And our next meeting is next Monday.
And you have a question on the YMCA contract. I know last year because of COVID, we were taking a little bit of a loss. Where are we with this contract?
They, what they're going to do for next year is renew at their full guarantee, minimum guarantee rate. So we're back to where we were basically before the pandemic. So we're going to comply with that.
I mean, it was like $60,000 or?
It was a hundred and, a hundred and six, a hundred and 65,000.
And we, yeah, how did that work out?
Well, that's, that's what they're going to guarantee us for next year. We have been collecting this year. Uh, it will be close to that number, but we had agreed with a, a side agreement to that proposal that we would base it more on actual enrollments and the amount from the proposal times the enrollment, we would collect that. But for next year, they feel that the enrollments will be strong enough and, uh, they are in agreement that we will honor the original proposal.
Do we know if the enrollment has jumped up again?
It has, it has climbed up. It's not totally back to, we were in, we were over 900 students before the pandemic. And I believe right now we were in, we're in the upper 700, lower 800 student range. So we're getting there. We're getting there.
About 75, 80% enrollments.
What's that?
It was about 75% back to where it was.
Yes, yes. And with the Whitsons renewal, we are, uh, pieces of that we negotiate are the guarantee to the district and also the increase in the meal rates. So they've held to a, they could have gone up based on the CPI up to a 7.5% increase in the meal rates that they charge the district, but we are holding at a 3%. And they will continue the guarantee. We negotiated a higher guarantee level for this current year because we had, again, due to the pandemic, allowed some latitude in previous year, but we are holding at that, at that higher guarantee level for next year as well. So it's the 220,000.
Good job.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to policy, Mrs. Tobacco.
Uh, we do not get to meet this month. We are meeting on Monday. Um, however, there's a lot of policies on this agenda for tonight for first read. Um, and committee all were sent those, uh, policies to review before tonight. Um, and do you want to just mention?
Yeah, it should be noted that two policies were pulled right now so we can have further discussion on Monday. One being the record keeping for healthcare setting in school buildings, which is related to COVID. That's under further review before we put it on for the first read. We have also pulled the political activities, um, that was on this month's policy alert and we're going to discuss that further before we decide to put it back on for the first read.
Thank you.
Mr. Capone?
Yes.
There were a lot of policies that we were asked to review. Can we get a summary of any of the changes or are they just policies that we had to report and that we updated?
Which changes? Might be talking to previous or?
Well, Mr. Donovan, there should, there should have been a policy alert that was updated onto the portal as well, which is a summary of each one of those policies and the changes. I could look in the morning to make sure that was updated.
Mr. Capra, what was the first policy you said you pulled? I'm sorry.
It was rec, it wasn't on there in the first place. It said it was record keeping for healthcare. It was on this, it was on this month's policy alert. It was pulled, it was pulled initially. We took the political view, viewpoint one off today and that will be discussed on Monday.
And that one is?
That is on the agenda tonight.
Be a good time.
Yes, thank you.
Moving on to curriculum, Mrs. Farley.
Uh, yes, we met, uh, the committee on May 4th and we reviewed all of the curriculum guides and, um, curriculum that was written last year that has to be updated every six years and then curriculum guides for new courses being offered. So all of those are going to be voted on by everybody tonight. There are a couple that are not on for tonight that will be on for either June or July. One being, um, a history elective in the high school that needed some more detailed sourcing. And then the other being the K through five health curriculum. Um, we were successful, we believe in finding a great resource for that K through five curriculum. Um, so we're in the process of reviewing that, incorporating that, and that will be a really clear defined place where, um, everyone in the community can go and look and see exactly what's going to be taught in that elementary, uh, unit. And then we will be, once everything is on and adopted, then we'll have, be having, uh, parent forums and towards the end of the summer, beginning of the school year so that folks can come out and, um, you know, actually see what exactly is going to be taught if they're interested. Um, we also talked about doing some parent information sessions for the curriculum guides as student transition from eighth to ninth grade because there's tons of great offerings at the high school and we just want to make sure everybody kind of knows about that and all those programs. Um, and we also, in coming months, either June or July, will be seeing the, the new CTE business courses, those curriculum will be on. And then the social emotional learning curricula that is in the process of being written right now, that will be on for the future as well. So those are not on tonight. Everything else was reviewed and we took a close look at everything and it's a great meeting. And, uh, that's all on for tonight.
Thank you.
Can you, those whole sources for the health curriculum, are those in a hard copy source? Not a website or?
Yes, it's not a website. It's not a dynamic source. They won't be changing. It's, they're almost like, um, like pamphlets, kind of.
Like a skelet, like the skelette.
Right, like a skelette reader.
Great. And the best part about it is the company does a crosswalk with the New Jersey standards. So you can see where the content exactly is covered in each of the pamphlets. So, and it, it does come with a digital subscription as well as a hard copy. So parents will be able to access the digital version at home as well if they want to preview the material.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, opening up the microphone now for public comment on agenda items only. If you'd like to make comments, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one stepping forward. I need a motion to approve items 12A through W. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I'm opposed on number W.
Abstentions? I need a motion to approve items 13 through 16.
So, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? I need a motion to approve 17.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? I need a motion to approve items 18B through 4.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion? Oppose, abstentions? I need a motion to approve items C2 through 5.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I'm opposed on number 2.
Abstentions? Need a motion to approve item 6.
So moved, second.
Amy, I need a roll call on 6, please.
Mrs. Hamaniti?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Heffernan?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Minuies?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Yes. And I was about to say, I'm very proud of this committee, the, the board for coming together on this and for putting our children first. Um, I think that two very important things that we have that we're here for is for the children's education and their safety. And I think everybody would agree that we want our children to be learning in school and not worrying about anything that could possibly take place. Um, I'm going to say thank you to two gentlemen there in the audience right now, Mayor Perry, Chief Weber. Thank you very much for your collaboration on this. Um, we spoke, uh, last week in an emergency meeting. Um, Mayor actually called me up and he said a couple of words, but his one, one word was, "I'm concerned." And I said, "So am I." We put our heads together. We had a committee meeting together and, um, we came with a, with a solution that we think that temporary right now will be permanent in September. But I think moving forward right now, I think that we can all ease our mind that we know and that our children are getting educated. Hopefully it'll calm down the mental state that our children are in and it'll make them worry about just learning at this point. So thank you both very much. Thank you to the officer in the back as well. Moving on to item 19B, 1 through 10.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? I need a motion to approve items C1 and 2.
So moved, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? I need a motion to approve items D1 and 2.
So moved, seconded.
D1 and 2.
First reading. First reading of the policies.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Tony. Okay, motion to approve E1 through 6.
So moved.
Second reading of the adoption of the law.
So D1, D1, they're introduced and read as stated and you need a motion on D2.
There it is. Motion on D2.
So moved, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion to approve E1 through 6.
So moved, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion to approve 1 through 6.
So moved, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? I need a motion to approve 1 through 3.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Report of the president. I'm just going to say, I hope everybody enjoyed their Memorial Day. Beautiful weather. I know I did. It was time well spent, time well over. We had a beautiful parade yesterday, uh, down by Bay Shore. Walked, uh, seemed like three and a half, uh, days, but it was a two and a half miles about. There's plenty of events going on next week and the week after till the end of the year. Uh, honest society, athletic signings, uh, graduations. So I hope everybody can attend and hope to see everybody there because, you know, the kids would really appreciate that. We're going to move on now to Mrs. Walker's report of the superintendent.
We have to do personnel first.
I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Capone was saying that in light of the tragedy in Texas, this past week's events have left many in our school community a little unsettled, rather, and looking for assurances that their children, our students are going to be safe. Um, you know, over the last decade, we have made large strides in creating a safe environment for our, our students here in school. Um, we added practices, procedures, security guards, um, that have really enhanced how safe our schools are. On the, on the other side, we have really enhanced our mental health resources for students and that's more proactive, preventative in that way. Um, we're really looking at this as a, you know, a two-pronged approach. Um, and then, you know, with the approvals of the board tonight, um, for added security, you know, with our police, that really, you know, makes a really big step forward. So we're all really happy and thank you to the board for, for hopping out there. Um, as Mr. Capone said, there's a lot of notable events going on. Um, this weekend, uh, this Friday is our High School North on High School South senior prom. So we hope they have a great time and have a very safe evening. Um, and just letting you know that earlier this evening, we did honor our retirees for their service. We have 53, um, members of our staff retiring. They were teachers, administrators, school nurses, paras, custodians, secretaries, security guards, and, and every one of them have touched our school community, helped our students, and we're just grateful for everything they've done over their career for us. We wish them a lot of happiness and good health in their retirement.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. And I will say also the administration and Mary Ellen as well was very, very, um, we collaborated all together. We were all on the same page. We all felt the same need for this and I'm happy that we all did this unanimously. I'm going to go to personnel right now. Okay, we have a motion to approve personnel, item I, 1 through 9.
So moved, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Need a roll call vote for number 10, Amy?
We need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Hamaniti?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Farley? Mr. Heffernan?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Minuies?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Yes, congratulations, Mrs. Colt. I need a motion to approve items 11 through 20.
So moved, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Anyone for old business? Anyone for new business?
I just want to reiterate some of the great things that are going on. We really all need to get out there. I know we're all going and it's exciting.
Every night there's something different. Look on the district website, you will see something else going on.
And it's great to see our students almost back to normal. They're as normal as they can get right now, but they're enjoying their time. And if there's nothing better than to see that happen and to see the smiles on their faces.
Agreed. We're going to open the microphone up now for public comment. Anyone wish to make a comment? Please state your name and address for the record.
Here, Seiki, SR Drive. I looked at the, uh, letter of intent and, um, I'd like to thank the township and the district for moving on that. Um, just a question, um, we have, um, most of our security guards in our buildings are retired police officers. Um, I know a couple who have maintained their ability to carry, um, weapons, guns. Um, is there any plan long-term to, I don't know the process, to maybe certify them as class three or use them, um, within the, the schools since they're already trained and have?
So here, let me just make, Mr. LeDoux, answer that question here real quick.
The class threes are employees of the township. So they will be, I don't want to speak for them, for the mayor or Chief Weber, but they will have a process for, uh, applying and becoming employed there. And surely any of our security officers are welcome to apply to that.
Okay, so these, the police officers will be on top of our security guards, so in addition to?
In addition.
Okay. Um, and then just the last question, so I don't have to selfishly put the calendar next to the old calendar. Can you say what changed?
Nothing changed in this calendar, correct?
No, that's, that's, there was no vote on that.
Oh, oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Mayor?
Tony Perry. 160 Kings Highway, Middletown, New Jersey. That's my building, but it's not town hall. Since I have to tell so many people that comes up to the microphone in town hall to repeat that I didn't want to forget it, I thought I would. Um, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I want to thank each and every one of you, uh, for your leadership, um, in, in what we were able to accomplish. Uh, obviously, uh, we have no ability to stop evil, um, and, and to know when evil is going to strike, uh, but all of us up here, uh, all of you up here today, um, were able to take a step forward in, in demonstrating leadership, the leadership that I hope other districts take, that other municipalities take. I want to thank Chief Weber, uh, for his leadership. Um, I want to thank, uh, President Capone, um, the shared services committee, Mary Ellen and Amy, uh, for everything that, uh, you are doing, uh, for the district.